It's called order to the Sparks City Council Meeting of Monday, June 27, 2016. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Byby.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a full house, thank you.
Okay, would you stand for the invocation, please? We have Pastor Omar Palmer, Sparks Seventh Day Adventist Church. Welcome, Pastor.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we are so glad, we're indeed grateful, to be alive today as we get ready to celebrate this coming weekend, the accomplishments of this nation. As a city council, we meet today to make plans and to take action. And we're going to ask, Lord, that you be in the midst of all of this. Because you know the future and you hold all things in your hands, we ask that you will guide and direct and may allow that which takes place here today to be beneficial to this great community of Sparks, and in fact, will also better our nation. We thank you again for all our leaders, and they have given their time. Some will continue, others will take a break. But for those who've given selflessly their service to this great city, we ask that you will bless them, bless their family members, bless everything that they do. And, Lord, we ask that you bless the citizens as they make very important decisions. May the decisions they make be ones that will be best for this city. Thank you, God, for this day, and now we lay everything in your hands and ask that you take full control. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it. Mr. Schmidt, would you lead us into Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take care of this before I get embarrassed. Okay, public comment? We have any speaker cards, Madam Clerk? Okay. Agenda approval of the agenda? Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. And the system is working today, I'm told? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion and approve the agendas outlined by staff.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Move by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Number six, 6.1, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting on June 13, 2016. Any omissions, deletions, corrections? Looking for a motion, Ms. Byby?
My move to approve the minutes, as submitted.
Of a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Byby, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve the minutes of June 13 meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, moving right along. 7.1, proclamation, Parks and Recreation Month. Misses Dominguez?
Tony Hawk's here.
Is he finally showing up, Tony Hawk?
Not yet.
We've been looking for him, too.
Years and years and years.
Okay. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Sparks, Nevada, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of business, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas parks and recreation provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas we recognize the vital contributions of our employees and volunteers in parks and recreation who keep public parks clean and safe for visitors, provide events and programming for all ages and abilities, advocate for more open space and better trails, and ensure that parks and recreation facilities are safe and accessible places for all citizens to enjoy. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim July 2016 as Parks and Recreation Month. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you for reading this proclamation each year for us, but more so for your support, your ongoing support for Parks and Recreation Services. We're small but mighty, I like to say, and I appreciate your support through the budget process to hopefully bring on a new Parks employee here very soon. We need a lot more help. We've made a lot of progress in making some improvements in our parks, and the attendance in those parks have just skyrocketed since the new equipment went in. So we hope to maintain that momentum and keep our parks and programs safe. So thank you.
Thanks. Any comments? Thanks, Tracy. Keep up the good work. Oops, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Tracy, I just wanted to do a quick job without the public to read about it. What a conversation it was, the tourism market. Talking about all the programs going on, and I asked them about GURF, where they found any idea that the Golden Eagle Regional Park draws more people here for tourism marketing than all other events combined just about. I think we're at a million, million people a year. It's the last week we did.
I think it's probably very well for us to start bringing that up in front of the council a lot more, of talking about GURF and talking about the stuff going on out there. Because, you know, we talk about some of these events that, you know, yes, they're big events. They draw thousands of people into town, but collectively, week in, week out, every week, you're turning people through our hotels, and the people just don't understand that. Congratulations for that, and just think that maybe we need to start putting it on the calendar at least once a quarter to look at the numbers for the Golden Eagle Regional Park, how it's doing, because I think it's tourism marketing. We don't fund you through tourism marketing, and you're the biggest event in the entire area collectively over a 12-month period of time. So keep up the good work.
Yeah, thanks, Tracy. You and your staff never realized what an economic driver that would be. I think when we opened it, it's really, really amazing, and it's just a world-class place, really. I remember a former Parks and Rec director who was here before, your good friend Stan, told me one time, he said, you know, as a Parks and Rec director, you only get one chance in your lifetime to put together something like that. So it's really something to be proud of. So thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I inherited a great facility from Stan, and...
And you helped him together, too.
And so, but you're right, we should celebrate that more, Councilman Schmidt. And in July, the second meeting in July, I will have staff for a presentation on events and Golden Eagle combined.
And if you could also, I know you gave me the copies of the book, Tracy, the book you put together for Parks and Rec about the Golden Eagle Regional Park and the other events. It was one of the most phenomenal publications I've ever seen with advertisement. I mean, this was fantastic. I took six copies for the council, and I failed to give them to them. So maybe next time you come, you bring them.
Oh, you took them all?
Yeah, I kept them all, yeah. You know, so, but I think people need to see that, you know, that is a phenomenal piece of work your department has done, and we need to celebrate it.
Great, thanks. I'll provide copies to everybody. Thank you. It's the... Councilman Schmidt's referring to the beautiful booklet that Andre put together, and it's just for sponsorship and ads for Golden Eagle. So it's a marketing tool, and we used to contract that service out, and we've taken it in-house and actually have done better, and mostly because of this piece that Ron's referring to, so.
Mr. Lawson?
Well, I wanted to bring up, too, that at our retreat for the RSCBA last week, Golden Eagle came up and the impact that it has. So, so much so that RSCBA wants to look at doing a similar project in the future.
Oh, wow.
And I said you'd be happy to program it. So...
Maybe they can even define what that S for in RSCBA.
I'll lose Tony if I put that on him, but if we find more people, we'll help out wherever we want.
It's because it's such a driver, though, that RSCBA's taken notice, and a lot of the hotel casino properties have noticed that. Good job.
I'm glad. Thank you. I appreciate that, because that's important feedback, because it also shows that we are booked. We are booked, and I think you're aware of the demand for that facility, and...
Well, we...
Every weekend...
Last week was a tournament promoter. They wanted to add a second week, and we can't accommodate them.
Right.
And they were bringing 100 teams in.
Yes.
So it's a big deal.
Yeah, we're at that point. We're maxed out, so, which is a good thing, but we need more, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Tracy. Appreciate it. Okay, consent items, eight one through eight eight. Anybody want to pull one? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pull eight point three, please.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Oh, okay. Move to approve consent items eight point one, eight point two, and eight point four through eight point eight.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Ratty, to approve eight one, eight two, eight four through eight eight. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Mr. Smith, eight three.
Just for discussion? I just want to keep my vote consistent with what I did last time.
Okay. Mayor Martini, members of the city council, for the record, I am Neil Cruz, Assistant City Manager. Before you today, with the interlocal cooperative agreement for the operation of the Community Assistance Center and other homeless services among the city of Reno, Washoe County, and the city of Sparks, this interlocal agreement contemplates a one-year period, so it would run from July 1st of this year through June 30th of 2017. You have previously discussed the funding alternatives and given staff direction, so we're simply here with the agreement today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Lawson?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Go for it.
I'm going to make a motion to approve item eight point three as presented by staff.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Move by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Ms. Ratty, to approve eight point three. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, passes three to two. Thank you. Thanks, Neil.
Thanks, Dan.
General business, consideration discussion and possible approval of the mayor's recommendations of two three-year term appointments to the Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission. And I have recommended out of this list Mr. Byram and Ms. Jennifer Martinez. Mr. Byram's a reappointment, Ms. Jennifer Martinez is a new appointment. Also for the Civil Service Commission, a reappointment, Morris Kenowitz. And that's it? Questions or looking for motion? Ms. Ratty? Okay, Mr. Smith?
Move to approve the mayor's recommendations for the Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission and the Sparks Civil Service Commission.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Schmidt, to approve agenda item nine point one as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, nine point two is consideration of a possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of the reappointment of Tom Lean to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission. This recommendation was made by the planning commission to me, and I'm recommending their appointment to you. So looking to reappoint Tom Lean. Any questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Byby?
Move to approve the mayor's appointment to the regional planning of Tom Lean.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Byby, seconded by Mr. Lawson, to approve nine point two as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Schmidt?
I'm gone.
This madam... Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you.
I'm having technical difficulties.
We've got Theresa on it now, okay. All right, let's move on to nine point three. Consideration and possible award of the 2017 street rehabilitation, unit one bid number Contract to Spanish Springs Construction in the amount of $1,184,444. Mr. Erickson?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, John Erickson, City Engineer for the record. As the mayor indicated, this is the 2017 Unit One project, and where this is located, here's North McCarran Sparks Middle School. So we're going to be working on Capuro, 19th, 18th, Galt Sioux, and Adele, and a little portion of 16th Street. We received four qualified bids, and the engineer's estimate on the project was 1.2 million. Spanish Springs Construction came in at a little over 1.18 million. Staff is recommending a word of the contract.
Questions for Mr. Erickson? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve agenda item nine point three as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, John. Nine point four, consideration and possible award of the 2016 parking lot rehabilitation project bid number 1516-017. Contract AC5259 to Sierra Nevada Construction, the amount of $162,007. Mr. Erickson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council members, John Erickson, City Engineer for the record. As the mayor indicated, this is our parking lot rehab for 2016. We received, or excuse me, we've got three parking lots that we're working on. The first being over here at Burgess Park, and we've just got a couple of photos of what the existing pavement condition looks like, so as you can see, it's gone past its useful life here. And then we're going to be repaving the parking lot here at City Hall. The winter really took a toll on that parking lot, where we've got potholes and the pavement failure. And then over at Chili, across from Fire Two, is going to be rehabilitated, and you can see the condition of that pavement is very poor at best. So we received two qualified bids on the project. The engineer's estimate on the job was $172,500. SNC submitted the low bid of $162,007. Staff is recommending awarding the contract.
Questions for Mr. Erickson? Mr. Schmidt?
John? On the City Hall portion of it, this weekend, we had some work being done by SNC on the parking lot? That's not being redone?
No, no.
It's under a separate contract?
Yeah, that, the, you're referring to the pavement that was done on Right Way? The slurry seal on Right Way?
No, we were on city property. They're doing the ramp in the back. They were doing the ramp in the back, and I don't know where else they were working at, but they were on our property.
I'll have to look into that one. I'm unaware of them working over the weekend, but I'll find out.
Yeah. He's here Saturday, doing some pavement work.
Okay.
Any more questions, looking for a motion? Ms. Byby?
I move to approve item nine point four as presented by staff.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Move by Ms. Byby, seconded by Ms. Ratty, to approve nine point four as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Smith? Thank you. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Nine point five is consideration discussion and possible approval to make changes to the City of Sparks Group Health Plan document. Welcome. How are you, dear?
I'm good. How are you? Good afternoon, Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager, for the record. Today, I'm bringing recommendations from the group healthcare committee that was voted on April 20th. They are asking you to change the health plan to be compliant with the Affordable Care Act and the Nevada law. The Affordable Care Act states the plans must not put a maximum dollar amount on essential health benefits, and Nevada law states that hearing aids are an essential health benefit. The current plan places a lifetime maximum of $2,000 and an 80% in or out of network benefit. The new language they're asking you to approve today has two hearing aid appliances every three years, and it would be an 80% benefit in-network and a 60% benefit out-of-network. And with that, do you have any questions?
Questions for Ms. Falk? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve the change to the City of Sparks Group Health Plan document to include the revised language for hearing aids as recommended by the city's group healthcare committee effective July 1, 2016.
Have a second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Move by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve nine point five on the health plan. Changes to. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. I see you pushing it. There it goes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Mindy. Nine point six, presentation, discussion, and possible ratification of City Manager Stephen W. Driscoll's decision to appoint Division Chief Chris L. Maples to the position of Fire Chief effective September 16, 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Steve Driscoll, City Manager, for the record, and I also have Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager, with me at the table. This is kind of one of those exciting times and sad times at the same. What we have is Chief Garrison, who signed on a couple of years ago to be our Fire Chief, has given us the notice that he's going to retire in September. That was part of what he agreed to when he took the job. So with that, I've gone through the normal process that we would have for looking at management positions in the city by starting with job descriptions and then determining whether or not there was a viable candidate internally. I conducted interviews over a six-month period of time with three particular individuals, and at the end of the day, I feel that Mr. Maples, Division Chief Maples, is the appropriate person, and I am appointing him, and what I need today from you is your ratification of that appointment. I want to just highlight a couple of things that were part of the process, and I think it's important for the council to understand. We have a long tradition of Fire Chiefs being promoted from within. There's a lot of strong reasons for that, and, you know, the culture itself, while it is constantly dynamically changing, there is some continuity that you get when you have the strength of someone who's come through the organization. And I believe that the process that I used, along with some help of conversations with the association, to understand what leadership qualities they were looking for, and having good, serious discussions on detail with the candidates and also with the current chief, and that's where I came to my decision. So I just want to go and touch on a couple of things that I was looking for as a result of those sidebar conversations. And I think the skill set that I was really focused on was some consistency, conflict resolution, be able to work internally as well as externally, a sense of fairness, an ability to remain calm under pressure. This is probably the one job, when things break and there's incident command, is set up, the police chief and the fire chief are the two strongest positions, and when they get called to the field, it's going poorly, and they're the ones that really need to be the calmest and have the greatest expertise on emergency management as it starts to help us, our citizens, and our visitors. Also, understanding the operational rules. There's a lot of things that go on in the daily operations between the administrative rules of the city, civil service rules for hiring and discipline, understanding the collective bargaining agreements that we work on in our day on how we assign and how we manage the workforce that we have. Also, there's an ability to communicate both internally and externally, every levels of the organization, and then able to take it to the outside world, to be able to communicate with you as an elected body on behalf of the citizens. I think it's also very important that we understand chain of command, and that internal to the fire organization, that's as important. Micromanaging there can be as detrimental as micromanaging in any other place in the city. So being able to have the right people in place and to trust them goes forward. And then it's really, it's up to the chief to have the strongest sense of core, to where he really understands what his team needs and why they need it, and how that fits in with the council's objectives and their priorities and their vision. And lastly, this person needs to be able to work as a member of the organization either individually or as a team. We've discussed different things in our one-on-ones, where we've asked certain questions to Fire Service and gotten those questions back, and we've done teamwork things over the years as we redefine what Fire Service means to our community. And so I think those are the skills that I was looking for, and it didn't take six months to find them, it just, we bit off little pieces over a six-month period of time, and these were the qualities that I was looking for. They're consistent with the things that the workers inside Fire Service are looking for as leadership skills, and over time, we kind of turned this one over a lot and had a lot of conversations. And so at the end of the day, that's why I'm confident that Division Chief Maples is the proper person to take over the leadership of the Fire Department in September when Chief Garrison leaves. So let me just give you a couple of next steps, and then I'll turn it over for your discussion. With your, with ratification today, if that's your pleasure, then I would be back to you the next meeting on the 11th of July with an employment agreement, which is similar to what we have with all of our senior staff. Because that agreement has a fiscal effect over $50,000 a year, obviously, it needs your approval for that contract. So that would be the next thing that I would be doing officially with the council. If you were to ratify my appointment today, I will be appointing Mr. Maples to actually become an acting chief from now until September 16, specifically for the purposes of training and transition. Official dates, if you will, on September 16 at 5:00 in the afternoon, Fire Chief Thomas Garrison will retire officially from service from the city, and at 5:01, Acting Chief Maples would become Fire Chief Maples if you ratify him today. The only other piece of business that we will have, normally when we approve the contract, if, when you approve an employment contract, at that point in time, in the public safety realm, there is a swearing in and pinning of the badge that would go forward. Mr. Maples will not be available on the 11th of July when we consider his contract. He'll be actually training back at Emmitsburg at the National Fire Academy. So based on your schedule, we will most likely be doing that official ceremonial piece on the first meeting in August. So with that, I'm prepared to answer any questions that the council may have on my plate.
Questions for Mr. Driscoll. Mr. Schmidt?
Ready to make a motion, Mr. Mayor. I move to ratify the city manager's recommendation, appoint Division Chief Chris Maples to the position of Fire Chief effective September 16, 2016.
Ms. Byby?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Ms. Byby, to approve Mr. Maples as the new Fire Chief. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. Congratulations. Have anything? You have anything to say, Mr. Maples?
Oh, we're here, too.
Might as well get used to it, huh?
Good afternoon, Chris Maples, Sparks Fire Department, for the record. I want to thank the city manager, mayor, and all of you for giving me the opportunity to lead the men and women of the Sparks Fire Department. I assure you, it's a responsibility that I don't take lightly. I know the challenges lie ahead. Every Fire Chief faces them, but I'm confident that as a department, we'll meet those challenges and we'll continue to move the organization forward. It's something we've done at Sparks Fire for over 100 years, and it's my expectation that we'll continue to do so in the future. So again, I just want to thank you, and I appreciate this opportunity.
Any comments? Well, thanks, Chris. We appreciate it. You'll be the long line of, from what? You'll be the long line of from-within fire chiefs, starting before Bill Farr, right? Was, who was, was one before Bill Farr, wasn't there? I don't even remember that, but Bill Farr is a few years ago, I think he started in '46, something like that, so it's been a long line of fire chiefs from within the City of Sparks, and it's a wonderful tradition, so congratulations. Okay, consideration and possible approval of a contract, AC 5260, to Spanish Springs Construction for A Street Alley Sewer Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $512,044. Mr. Andy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Martini, members of the council, for the record, Andy Hummel, Utility Manager for the City of Sparks. This item is our 2016 sanitary sewer rehab project. It's pretty straightforward, looking at 800 feet of sewer main, it's eight-inch behind alley of Fire One. It's installed in the 1920s, and it's at the end of its life, so 100 years, about all we get. Yep, exactly.
Is it still in the same place, or has it moved or anything?
Up and down, yes. It has definitely moved. That's the problem, we can't even get through it with the cameras anymore. The only really interesting part is the recommended award. We received three bids, two of those were really close, we had Peak Brothers Construction at $503,000, Spanish Springs Construction at $512,000, per NRS 338, 147. Anything over $250,000 in the state of Nevada is the lowest bidder, subject to submitting a local preference certificate. This certificate provides a 5% preference relative to a contract that does not provide said certificate. In this case, Peak Brothers did not have that certificate, Spanish Springs did, the bids were well within that 5%, therefore, Spanish Springs Construction is our recommended bidder. And with that, any questions?
Questions, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andy, you know, the 5% bid, straightforward, I understood that. Was there any conversation with Sierra Nevada Construction on why theirs is 80% more than the others? I mean, I understand, I know Spanish Springs Construction is a good contractor, I don't know anything about Peak Brothers, but Sierra Nevada is usually a lot closer than that. Are they seeing something different that nobody else is?
I think they're seeing a very full calendar.
Okay.
Looking at the numbers, we estimated this to be a $500,000 project, so we're very happy where it came in, but this time of year, Mr. Erickson just brought forth over $1 million to them, they're busy.
And they're always right in there.
Yeah.
They're always, I mean, they're within the top two, three all the time, you know, or, so I'm just kind of concerned with maybe a conversation if they saw something different, make sure it is a budget issue.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, scheduling. Everybody's busy.
I can verify that, talked to somebody from Sierra at lunch, and they said they were very, very busy.
Yeah, it's good to hear.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the contract to Spanish Springs Construction for the A Street Alley Sewer Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $512,444.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve Agenda Item 9.7, is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Andy. Let's move on to planning and zoning, public hearings and action items. 11.1, PCN 15067, consideration and possible certification of a master plan amendment to change the land use designation from TC, Tourist Commercial, to I, Industrial, on a site approximately 4.32 acres in size, located at 350 Galetti Way, Sparks, Nevada. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, members of the council, Ian Critten, Senior Planner. This item and item 11.2 are integrally, very closely related. The word would not come off.
We knew what you meant.
And so I'm going to do my presentation for both, since they are so related, and then you'll be able to ask me whatever questions you need to. So, SEMEX operates a batch plant at 333 Galetti Way in Reno currently. They also own the 350 Galetti Way site. You can see, this is a map here, this is, you know, I-80 and Prater, and then Galetti Way going right here, and that, Galetti Way is actually the borderline between Sparks and Reno at this point. This piece here is owned by the SEMEX, by the applicant, and then they operate their batch plant on the Reno side now. And this side is essentially material storage and parking and some things like that. They've been operating that site, the Spark site, since, as far as I could find from records, about 1997, there was a special use permit to be able to do those kinds of things there. I believe, I've forgotten the name of the concrete company it was at that time, but it's changed hands, but that use has continued. And so, the applicants expressed an interest to relocate their batch plant from the Reno side to the Spark side, and so this is kind of the first phase in being able to really be able to go forward and look at that. The land use designation at the site is TC, or Tourism Commercial, as is the zoning. The applicants requesting a change to I, to Industrial, for both the land use and the zoning. The current land use of Tourism Commercial is not being used for its intended purpose at this location, and the transition to Industrial makes a lot of sense, as a lot of the area around this is already industrially used at this point. It's also adjacent to the freeway, which is, makes Industrial make some sense as well. To the south of the site, you can see this large green area, that's all public facility. Sometimes people think, oh, that's parks and so forth, no, it really just means it's owned by the city or a state agency, and in this case, we've got a bunch of state-owned property that's used for essentially industrial uses. The city, there was a neighborhood meeting on February 16. There were two neighborhood neighbors that came to that meeting, there was no objection to the potential change in zoning and land use. There wasn't really a concern about the operation moving sides. There was some concerns that were talked about, about just operations, keeping dust down, stuff like that, but the side of the street was not of concern to the neighbors that did come to that meeting. There, at the March 3, Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission forwarded a recommendation of approval. This portion, the master plan portion subsequently went to Regional, who also found it in compliance with the regional plan, and now it's trickled down till it gets to your city council. There have been some concerns voiced, both by NDOT and by city staff, about the potential for increased traffic at that intersection. The applicant has made his, they're, they don't intend to operate both sides as a concrete batch plant. If, if, if things move forward and they're able to make the transition, they were, the plan is to update some machinery, to update some equipment, and move it to the Spark side, so we're not looking at an increase in, in volume really from that location, they're just looking to, if they update their equipment, they want to move it to the larger site, because the Spark side is the larger site, so they'll have some better circulation around and be able to do those kinds of things. And in addition, as this moves forward, obviously, this is a master plan and rezoning request. Specifics of how we could, you know, address any of those potential issues will happen at the administrative review level, so these aren't things we're just not paying attention to, but there will be an in-depth review of them at that level as well. This is just a request for the change in land use and zoning. Staff was able to make the findings associated with both master plan and land use amendments, as well as the rezoning. We recommend approval, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Critten and Mr. Smith?
I mean, tourist commercial, that's not going to happen on that intersection, and my only concern is, and I'm glad you're looking at it, is traffic. There are times, it's just not cement trucks, but it's, you know, trailers, drop trailers and everything else like that, that, you know, transports that are bringing materials and stuff in. There are, there have been a couple of times that things have backed up, you know, onto Prater and everything, so I would strongly recommend staff look at the traffic analysis, maybe get some turn lanes in there when they do it, so it doesn't, doesn't back up traffic. Thank you.
Anyone else, questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, I'll open it up, anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to this particular item. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action, or questions. Mr. Smith?
I'm sorry, this is not my, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead, Ms. Ratty.
I move to approve-
This is 11.1, by the way, I'm sorry.
Yes. On 11.1, I move to approve the master plan amendment associated with PCN 15067, based on the findings M1 through M4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Now, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve PCN 15067, Agenda Item 11.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 11.2, this is also a public hearing item, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to 11.2? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Ms. Ratty?
I'll make a motion, I move to approve Bill Number 2707, and approve the rezoning request associated with PCN 15067, to rezone a site approximately 4.32 acres in size from Tourist Commercial to Industrial, based on finding Z1 through Z3, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve Agenda Item 11.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Ian. Okay, moving on to 11.3, second reading, public hearing, consideration and possible action on Bill Number 2706, and ordinance to rezone approximately 10.23 acres from NUD, New Urban District, to MUD, Mixed Use District, located at 675 Marina Gateway Drive, Sparks, Nevada. This would be PCN 16013. Ms. Melby?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you today is Bill Number 2706, which is requesting to rezone two properties, a total of 10.23 acres. It's on the exhibit, it's this parcel here, which is 2.6 acres, and then this is about eight, so it totals 10.23 acres. Currently, they are both zoned, NUD, New Urban District, and what the applicant is requesting to rezone them to Mixed Use District. And it's located at 675 Marina. As you remember, on June 13 of this year, the handbook to remove where the hand is right now on the exhibit, this parcel, from the Marina Landing Plan Development, and you approved that on June 13. So this request is a companion to that request, and what they want to do now is rezone both of these to the Mixed Use District. These, both these parcels are located within the Sparks Marina area, which is developing with a mix of uses, so staff feels that, that it's appropriate to be making this a Mixed Use District. At this time, we don't have any proposed development plans, but staff will have to review, any development plans would either be through a conditional use permit or an administrative review, and at that time, we would address any impacts, potential impacts that would be related to the development. Staff is, and Planning Commission are recommending approval. My conclusion to the presentation.
Questions for Ms. Melby, Mr. Lawson?
Car wash and the gas station, are they MU, also Mixed Use?
They are part of the Marina Landing Handbook, so they're actually the NUD, which is the New Urban District. That would be this parcel.
So, does this then move all the buildings to the front of the property, parking in the back? Is that what, Mixed Use?
The, this request does not affect, you see the area here in gray on this exhibit? That will now be what is the Marina Landing Handbook, not including this parcel anymore, and these will be, so the development would incorporate both of these parcels and not affect the existing Marina Landing Plan Development.
It doesn't move parking to the back of the structures, doesn't it?
It doesn't affect them at all.
My question.
Uh-huh.
Anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone want to speak to this item 11.3? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for questions or action. Mr. Smith?
Ready to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt Bill Number 2706, and approve the rezone request associated with PCN 16013, based on findings Z1 through Z3, and facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee, to approve 11.3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Karen, appreciate it. Closed-door session, Mr. Driscoll?
No, sir.
Okay, next is comments from the public. Anyone want to speak on the comments from the public? Next, we have comments from the city council and city manager. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have two announcements. First, the following committee appointments are available, the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission, five members for two years. Membership to the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission will be appointed in the following manner. Two members with forming arts backgrounds, two members with a visual arts background, one member with a humanities background. The Parks and Recreation Director will also assign one non-voting staff member. Person who's interested in serving on this committee should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. You would click on City Services on the webpage, then you click on Volunteering, Get Involved, and then you click on Fill Out a City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on Friday, January 29 of 2016.
January, June?
Excuse me, July 29 of 2016.
Comments, Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I just wanted to acknowledge personally, and then on behalf of the city, our Olympic gymnast Jake Dalton, who just qualified for the men's Olympic gymnastics team. My son did gymnastics with him years ago at Gymnastics Nevada, when Jake was about seven, and so we've watched, watched him grow and represent our community, both in London, and now he'll be going to Rio, and just want to wish him all the luck in the world, and his family owns Gymnastics Nevada, which is a Sparks business, and just kudos to them, and great work, and we'll be following him to Rio with big congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Melby. Great. Anyone else?
I'd also like to remind the council that we'll be canceling the July 25 regular council meeting, and that the next meeting of this council will be on Monday, August 8.
Is that it? Okay, Mr. Driscoll, I've been under the impression that we were going to have a council discussion on the process for paramedics for the fire department.
Yes, sir.
I thought it was going to be done by now, can you give me an update on when it might be, and if, I know we're going to do it, because I've-
We were originally going to, we were going to do it on the second meeting of July, and with the councilization, your meeting was not time-sensitive, so we are currently scheduled to bring that in front of the council for your consideration on August 8.
Okay, so it will be on the agenda for August 8?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, further business, we are adjourned.
Development Agency meeting for June 27, 2016, with a roll call. Chairperson Ratty? Here. Agency members Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
And Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, approval of the agenda.
Approve, Ben, Chair?
Second.
Got a motion by Agency Member Martini, seconded by Agency Member Bybee, any discussion? Seeing none, all those, oh, please vote.
You know how to work that thing, you know?
Passes unanimously, item 5.1, minutes?
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion-
Got a motion to approve the minutes of the agency meeting on May 23rd, 2016, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Oh, I missed, yeah, she turned it. Still missed.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 6.1, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of May 5th, 2016 through June 18th, 2016.
Approve, Madam Chair?
Second.
Motion by Agency Member Martini, seconded by Agency Member Bybee, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 7.1, comments from the public, do we have any public comment?
Seventy-year-old kid.
Seeing none, 7.2, comments from the agency or Chief Administrative Officer, Mr. Driscoll.
Madam Chair, the regularly scheduled readout of the agency meeting of July 25th has been canceled, the next meeting of this body will be on Monday, August 22nd.
So, I'm sorry, can I have clarification on that? I thought we were going to move it up into July 11th.
I'm sorry, the July meeting will move to July 11th, and then the next one would be the second meeting in August, so the next one will be July 11th, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, anything else? Seeing none, we are adjourned.